I'd like to call the City of Ione regular meeting of Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 to order. Janice, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Atlin.
Here.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Here.
Mayor Mitchell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ratten.
Here.
Mayor.
Here. Uh, I'd like to move closed session to the end. Can I have a motion?
I'll second.
I'll make a motion that we move closed session to the end.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move item B. Hey, could you join us in leg of allegiance?
I believe in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Okay, next up, we have presentations and announcements, which is a proclamation for the Red Cross. I have it. Did you want me to just read it out? Okay. Okay, we have a. Is that Andy's? Okay. Are you ready? Okay. Uh, first off, I'd like to read the proclamation that we have for you. Um, and if anybody's interested, we do have some information here on the Red Cross for you to come take a look and get some more information. This is a proclamation for the American Red Cross Month 2024. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Ione and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crises. And whereas this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanitarian legacy of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviate suffering. And whereas today, kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they step up through the Red Cross in the Gold Country region to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make life-saving difference in people's darkest hours. Whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations from hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crisis. And whereas we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community. Now therefore, I, Allison LeFane, mayor of Ione, by virtue of authority vested in me by the laws of City of Ione and the state of California, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Red Cross Month. And I encourage all citizens of Ione to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. The foregoing proclamation is duly introduced and adopted by the City Council of the City of Ione at their regular meeting held on March 19th, 2024 by the following vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Red Cross.
Thank you very much. I'm Joel Lynda Sim. I'm the community volunteer lead for the Motherlode Counties. And we have Rebecca Mish here, who is our disaster program manager, Paul Keaton, and Joe Luttrell, who are Amador baseball and tears. And we just want to thank you so very much. Red Cross has quite a history in Amador County, going back more than a hundred years and through disasters, large and small. I was reading history of Amador because I love to read history about the Argonaut Mine Disaster. And Red Cross was very, very involved in the response that they did for those forty-some families. And so, and we're still here and we're still rendering services. Oh, please. Let me just turn it off. I should have done that. My assistant. Anyway, um, we do, you know, disaster responses from house fire to very, very large disasters. I think we've had a couple of house fires here in Ione the last year. We do disaster preparedness training and we have the Sound the Alarm Program, where we installed at least a hundred, I think maybe a little over a hundred alarms, smoke alarms, because smoke alarms save lives. We also have services to the armed forces, including veterans. We have health and safety training, youth services with active Red Cross Club at Amador High School, and of course, blood. Thank you so very, very much. What we would ask is if you hear anybody that's looking for a worthy volunteer activity, we'd really like to grow our Amador team. And if you hear of somebody, I put a couple of propaganda flyers over there on the table and the mayor has them and we.
Marketing. It's not propaganda. It's marketing.
Okay. Well, thank you very much and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, maybe we can take a picture. In this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, it's a weapon.
Okay, item F is information matters only. Right? I skipped over E.
I will open it up for public comment.
Forget that one.
Good evening. Hi. My name is Tracy Burkner and I am the owner and operator of Taste Restaurant and Wine Bar and Rest Hotel in Plymouth. And thank you so much for letting me speak this evening. Tonight, I'm here to represent the Amador Council of Tourism and Visit Amador. Uh, I am the co-founder and current vice president of the Board of Directors. I would like to give you an update on our efforts for the Amador County Marketing Destination Organization, Visit Amador. Seven months ago, the Visit Amador Executive Board of Directors sought the advice of a nonprofit board consultant. And during this process, we developed a plan to boost the marketing of Amador and our presence as a dynamic destination marketing organization. Through this process, the executive board has decreased administrative and office expenses. Uh, and we now share space with the Amador Ventners Association in Plymouth. And the executive board has transitioned to a working board. We have taken on the task of enhancing Visit Amador marketing goals. Our entire board is volunteer. We all have more than full-time jobs, either running our own businesses or running somebody else's businesses. So this is a task that we have taken on and that's why you're seeing us here tonight, or myself here tonight, to represent our organization. We are a nonprofit organization that started in this county 21 years ago. We meet on a regular basis now with the Amador Chamber of Commerce and the Amador Ventners Association to streamline our efforts. As a team, we have outlined responsibilities and goals to help create a sustainable and successful business climate that is enhanced by increased tourism and community support. And we're committed to working together for the success of our community. We're calling ourselves the Amador Business and Visitors Alliance. A robust marketing plan that we have reboosted in the last four months includes TV appearances, TV commercials, radio spots, digital billboards, all through Sacramento, Central Valley, and the Bay Area. We have regional print magazines. We have a current promotion going on in the San Francisco Chronicle. We're doing email marketing, social media, influencers, sponsorship, travel shows, and much more. In fact, this weekend, we were at the Bay Area Travel Show in Santa Clara. There were over fifteen thousand attendees. And our booth was manned all by volunteers for the whole weekend. And we had some incredible response and our website visits have increased exponentially in the last four days. So it's very exciting to see the interest in, in our region and people discovering it for the first time at the travel show. So in addition to all that our volunteer board is accomplishing, the Amador Lodging Alliance is going to be seeking the passage of a Tourism Business Improvement District in 2024. This is a visitor assessment that will be passed through all lodging facilities in Amador. And the assessment funds will be directed towards marketing to improve midweek visitation, drive overnight stays, and strengthen marketing partnerships within Amador for the promotion of midweek business. Visit Amador has our monthly meetings are the third Thursday from nine to 10, 10:30 sometimes if we're social. And this is held at the Hotel Sutter. And everyone is welcome. We do have some great Ione participation from the Preston Castle and the rail tours are on, are attending as well. And we'd be delighted to answer any questions that anybody has about what Visit Amador is doing, who we are, and how we can help Ione. Thank you very much for your time and we appreciate you letting us speak.
Thank you.
Very much.
Do we have? Am I confused? Do we have an appointed person?
The tourism.
Yeah.
Committee, yeah.
I don't know if we have it. ACT, we used to.
We don't have.
It used to be on tourism.
Yeah, because I, I'm getting your emails.
Good.
But I thought.
I haven't been getting any.
But I thought you were appointed to the committee.
Well.
So is there, is everybody confusing between two committees? I think. No, there's just, there's just the, the, the Amador Council of Tourism. We've, we've been calling ourselves Visit Amador because that's, that's what, that's what all of the, the destination marketing organizations are moving towards to follow suit with Visit California. So about five years ago, we started changing everything to be Visit Amador.
That's probably.
Yeah.
Do you have, you have a website, I assume?
Visitamador.com.
Yeah. Okay, so we can put that on, a link for that on our webpage?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I do believe that I have put everybody on our mailing list so that you're aware of what we're doing. But if you aren't getting the emails, let me know because sometimes that happens.
Yeah.
So Jack, I need to put you on the.
Yeah.
Double check. Okay.
I'm pretty sure you were appointed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Very interesting. Yes.
I said, we'll make sure we participate.
Please do, please do, because there's lots of opportunities and we just want to make sure that we're lifting the community up in all the ways that are best for, not only for the businesses, but for the people that live here.
Yeah, and it, and it would tie nicely into our Economic Development Committee as well.
Absolutely. I have been asked to speak at other cities' economic development meetings. So when are those held? And I'd be happy to have myself or another representative come.
I can let you know.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. And just reach out and you can reach out to, to hello@visitamador.com.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great email address.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
There shouldn't be seven there. We could pass them along for each council. Back in September, October, somewhere around in there, the discussion was that Ione should be in the business of selling wastewater. A concept that I agree with on an intellectual level, but when I pointed out that I don't think you may own the water. Well, let's say due to the diversity of opinion expressed by the different members of the council, I think it would be healthy for us to go over that portion of the contract. And that is page four, a ten-page contract from, uh, March 5th of 2013. And it says, "Write a first refusal to additional water to the extent that the city possesses, controls, and/or owns recycled water in excess of the committed delivery that is available for the city to supply to a water user and which has not been previously committed to another water user as of the effective date." Golf course. "Greenrock shall have the right to accept and take delivery of all or a portion of the delivery of the additional water pursuant to the terms of this agreement, either on the subject property or any other property owned or controlled by Greenrock or its parent company prior to the city offering and/or providing any of the additional water to another water user or otherwise disposing of the additional water. If the city has additional recycled water available, it shall notify Greenrock to determine if Greenrock desires to accept and take delivery of the additional water." And this is the one I like. "The parties understand and acknowledge that the sources of the additional water are not limited to the current recycled water sources available to the city, but include any and all sources of recycled water that the city may have or obtain in the future." Like I said, due to the diversity of opinion, don't really want to go over it now, but this is what your contract says. So can I respond to any comments or answer any questions? Thank you.
I'm David Anderson. Mr. Scully is such a hard act to follow. Uh, last October, I received a public records response from CDCR regarding Mr. Allen's employment. It indicated he is an employee of Cal PIA. However, I recently received Mr. Allen's Form 700, which has, uh, which he has completed indicating he is or was an employee of Castle Oaks Golf Course as the manager. So the Form 700 is incorrect on its face. As it is to be completed under penalty of perjury, Mr. Allen has some explaining to do. Sitting on the city's wastewater committee is in apparent conflict of interest in either employment capacity. As a city councilman and golf course employee, it appears that you have been coerced to protect the golf course's financial interest over that of the city. The city was to receive a 1% share of revenues in excess of $2,200,000 each year. No financial statements have been produced for many years, showing the gross receipts of how many comps or bartering arrangements Mr. Allen has approved. On the flip side of the coin, Mr. Allen works for the main producer of the, of the chemical contamination in the effluent from Mill Creek State Prison. Financial coercion from that employer is readily apparent. There are many questions Mr. Allen has created by his obvious lack of transparency. I would hope the city attorney clears up this confusion and takes appropriate action, but I am not hopeful. The PRA request I made of Mr. Allen's emails between CDCR and himself was not fulfilled. I received nothing responsive, although I did receive 4,434 pages of reports, agendas, studies, redacted emails, photographs, and assorted junk. Please review Mr. Penasco's billable hours connected with this charade and dock his pay. I have not received any indication. The city has no responsive records to my original request. Please respond and indicate the records are forthcoming or do not exist. There is no third option. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
I'd like to make a response to the cash flow fund of 2020, I mean, second month, 29, 2024. COVID money, you got about 1.200,000, 1,200,000. I'd like to see that money instead of being gone to some, paying something else off the West Marlet Street. Fix the sewer, fix the thing. And if you're going to put sidewalks, tell the owners that they're, the property next to them, they're going to be responsible for it by the city's code. Either that or fix the clarifier in our sewer plant. We're filling it up with solids. And about five years ago, I asked the engineer what it cost and he said about $125,000, $150,000 to clean one pond with a liner in it. We ought to take this money and it's made for infrastructure. We should use it on that and not blow it away, paying off something else like this building next door. Thank you.
My name is Joel Piddo and I have an update on the events going on at Josie's. With the help of the chief, Alfred, we had a meeting with the tenants. It was short notice. There was no notice, but it still filled the room with old people in wheelchairs with a long litany of reasonable complaints. This problem at Josie's has apparently gone on for a long time and is known far and wide. I tried to get in touch with Legal Aid Society and mentioned I was in Ione and he just burt out Josie's. It's not the biggest secret that you got a problem there. And, um, as a reward for my efforts, I received my three-day notice of eviction yesterday. It's more complex than that and I'm not worried about the situation. I have so much documentation. I would look forward to the hearing. But there's some problems that could be helped here. I've been trying to get on the regular agenda five times in a row and evaded every time because this is an issue that needs response. It needs interaction. It needs discussion. You have mysterious rules of what it takes to qualify to get on the agenda. And I don't know why, but I do not qualify and I object to that. My second objection is to the recent decision of your building inspector, Josh, who has looked into the issue of the bathrooms at Josie's. And they've been locked for the last two years despite the fact that the majority of the people there are old and disabled. It is obvious why they lock them and they don't have to pay people to clean them. And people honestly are not always raised well in their bathroom activities. I understand the reluctance. But when you got a bunch of old people on heart meds and diuretics who are down working in the laundry room and need to go, it's not an option to go up over elevator, down, around. So Josh's decision is based upon a health and safety code that he was so helpful to provide to Josie's management that indicates the bathrooms only have to be open during the hours, that there is management available. And it's only been increased recently that we're going to have a manager there five days a week. And, um, we're only available to speak to them four hours per day. So out of the 168 hours in a week, the old folks can go to the bathroom in the public area 20 hours out of 168. And that's what you people are backing. There has also been a problem. Some idiot put a bag of rice on a burner and turned it on and walked away. And there's some question about the witnesses and the situation and what went on. But this investigation has taken longer than Oklahoma City bombing investigation. And we would like our kitchen returned to our use. The absolute god of peoples in this community is Chief Mackey. And he's earned his reputation. I would not want to have to go through an emergency without him. But, um, he has closed down our cooking facilities until this case is solved. And it's not reasonable. The old people get one get-together a month and sometimes a second one for birthdays. They've been canceled. My wish would be that the city puts this situation into something they could be proud of, something if your parents were there would be okay with you. And I would hope that it would not be okay with you that only one eighth of the time can an old person use a bathroom. And that's just one of the examples. There's numerous problems there.
We're, we're coming up on five minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But no, you're fine, but I hear you and I'm sure everybody else hears you as well. So I'm not, is this something we can put on the agenda, Andy? For discussion, action?
So the.
I know.
Yeah, it, it all falls back into your, your various departments within the city. So if there's issues that, that are related to, you know, buildings and construction and the facilities, we have our Public Works, we have our Building Department.
I mean, above and beyond the administration part.
Um, it depends on what you're putting it on. I mean, to put it on the schedule for just general discussion, you're, you're really without authority or power to, to take any action because you've delegated all of that authority down to your building department. And we have processes within our ordinance that guides, you know.
I understand that part. I just.
I, I guess it would, my question back to you would be, you know, it depend on what, what it is that you're considering.
Has the county health been made aware of this? And if so, what's their response been?
I, that's one department I didn't go to.
Oh, because they're the ones that. Okay.
The county health has been notified. They've been notified a number of times, actually. But keep, keep doing it. I mean, it's.
I've been advised to do less. Um, I've irritated some people and stepped on some toes and put myself at risk. I should probably take the advice and not critique you quite as often. If there's any chance of getting this heard for inquiry, I'm not saying to take an action or take a vote, but just let's air the issues. Let's find who's responsible and who could improve the situation. I'm sure there could be a rule made that the bathrooms are open whenever people with the key to the building need them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Madam Mary, I'd like to speak to this.
Thank you.
So I've spoken with Mr. Piddo and as well as our police chief, our police sergeant, our fire marshal, and our building department have all spoken to Mr. Piddo as well as management staff. And from my understanding, understanding, Chief Alfred, if you want to correct me, is, or add in, there's, it's a civil issue. And we've done our due diligence in tracking down any building code violations, any other crime that might be occurring there, any fire code violations. But at this point, it remains a civil issue amongst the property or the residents and the management staff there.
So, so from the, um, from the law enforcement and the fire side, it, it is a civil issue. I know the fire had some stuff going on with some doors. some doors that need to be fixed and stuff and they're on top of that. But on the law enforcement side, it was a civil issue. Now, it's my understanding, Mr. Pito, that you did not get an eviction notice yesterday.
It was a three day notice. It's commonly perceived to be an eviction notice, but it's a beginning step along the process and I'm not.
Well, I'll talk to you after the meeting. We'll talk about that. But yeah, so at this point though, from at least from the police and the fire side, it's civil. There's nothing we, we don't have any authority over it.
Okay. Just wanted to cover that. All right. Thank you. Any additional public comment? Anybody on Zoom? No? Okay, closed public comment. Information items.
I'd like to pull number five. Or are we going to have a report on everything or?
For discussion?
Yeah, just a quick comment.
Okay.
Okay, oh, open.
Go ahead.
So the wastewater treatment plant report, once again, there's multiple violations, but only BODs are noted in the report as a violation. But if you look at it, there's at least five or six other categories that are way over what the, what the legal requirement is. So why, and I asked this question a month ago. Because it was the same on that report. So just, you know, they're being transparent. They're noting that they're over their limits, but only one of them's a violation, the BOD, where there's a bunch of nitrates and everything else. So just like to know why it's only one violation and not six. Thank you.
Now you made me lose my place, Dominic.
Consent calendar.
I understand that part. I just can't find it because I'm next up. Can I get an approval of the consent calendar?
Yeah, I'd like to pull a couple of items out of that as well. Three and four.
Items three and four for?
For discussion. Other than that, I approve the consent calendar.
Okay, do we want to put those at the?
Yeah, put them in the start of the ready plan, out of work.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus three and four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Talk about three and four. I'm not mission two. I'm missing page two of my agenda. We've gotten mixed in with everything else.
Didn't I just give you mine?
You gave me.
Thank you.
Well, no, that's the one I don't have either.
Okay, we'll put it in the middle.
Okay. Okay, so we're done with the items on the consent calendar?
Hmm.
Okay. Can I get approval for the regular agenda?
You still have items three and four on the consent that have been pulled. The remainder has been approved.
So we need to discuss three and four.
Okay, I thought. Right.
Me?
Yeah. You pulled them.
I'm going to start with four because that's easy. First of all, the employee handbook took months and months of talking about. And then just put it in the consent calendar and just wave it in. I think it needs to be looked at. So I would like the employee handbook to be reviewed. I'd like to see what's been changed in, you know, red writing. And then brought back at a later date for the employee handbook. And maybe the only thing that's been changed is the one twenty five plan. So, but I don't know that, so.
It's outlined in the staff report. There were some legal requirements that needed to be changed.
Did see that, yeah.
So those were the changes and the section one twenty.
So it was only those things and nothing else. Okay, then I'm okay with the handbook. The one twenty five plan is a whole different thing. First of all, I come before the one twenty five plan. However, I have a bunch of questions and some of them are just, it looks like if you work a thousand and forty hours, you get the full twenty one thousand dollar benefit, which I disagree with. I think you need to be working at least thirty hours a week. Yeah, a week. So I have a concern with, and I have a problem with the police or fire department getting the one twenty five plan. No problem at all. Kind of like to see the other staff phased in as budget permits. Maybe we do one this year and then so on, introduce some more down the road. But to give it to part timers, twenty hours a week, I think it doesn't say that it's going to be prorated. So is it, you know, half of what the full time it is?
Employee handbook.
Okay.
So section one twenty five, so we have to, any employees over twenty hours a week, we have to provide benefits. However, with new state law, all employees, regardless of how many, what their part time status is, get at least twenty four hours of sick leave per year. So the section one twenty five plan will be prorated based on the full time equivalency. So if you're a point two four, then you would get twenty four percent of the benefits. So everything is always prorated and it's outlined in the employee handbook how it would be prorated. So if you're a fifty percent employee, fifty, part time, fifty percent, then you would get the half the benefit amount. So it wouldn't be the full thousand dollars or whatever the amount, it would be five hundred dollars.
Okay, I got the handbook right here and I didn't see that. What page is that on?
I don't have that.
Okay, so I didn't see it and I read it pretty well. So if what you're saying is, is, is what it is, then I'm fine with it, but.
That's how we administer benefits now also. So if you're a twenty, if you're a thirty two hour week employee, you get point eight of the benefits. So everything's already administered that way.
Okay. And then it looks like there's fourteen employees. Is that correct? Looking at your chart here, that affects the budget. I counted up. Looked like fourteen.
Believe so.
Is that about right? Okay.
And that's another point to make is with purrs. That also is how the purrs is allocated. So if you're a thirty two hour week employee, you only accrue at point eight of the hours, not a hundred.
Yeah, I would like to make sure that that is in the book when it goes out. Like I say, I did read it pretty well and may have skipped over it, but a lot of pages. But that's it. Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve three and four on the consent calendar.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Mayor, can we?
Oh, we're, we're, sorry. We're going to move item five, which is the discussion regarding the purchase or lease of a tractor for the Ed Hughes Memorial Arena up to the front. Number one, we'll have a acting interim Public Works Chief Mackey, our department director.
Yeah, master of everything.
Yeah.
Mainly tired.
Retired.
Tired.
Tired, yeah.
Both.
I was going to say, you're not really retired.
Thank you, counsel, for having me tonight. Apologize for the time duration regarding this subject matter. As you all know, the tractor that was current, that was out at the arena is out of service. It's going to cost more than it, than it's worth to fix. That's where the whole discussion came about. I did go out and do the measurements and take all the needed information and talked to experts in the field close by here at the Rancho Marietta Arena and very, very helpful. And I got a lot of information from them pertaining to what we actually need as far as the capabilities. In the document, you all noticed that there's not a front bucket or any attachments to it because it's mainly a plow unit or a pulling type tractor that will double not only at the arena, but also down at the sewer treatment plant for being able to pull the heavier equipment around the ponds and get them to the locations they're supposed to be. By having the added items, it's going to add cost as well as people doing things they shouldn't be doing with the tractor. And it's not what it's meant for. It's meant for those two specific items to keep the arena groomed and for the wastewater. And with all the abilities the last one had, I think that's where we got into some issues with some civilians that were using it that that shouldn't have been using it or over, under qualified. So with the plan that I've given to you in the packet, it all, it shows the repair work order system, our maintenance system, and we also have a policy and procedure set up for the ways for the Public Works employees. They weren't doing regular maintenance on it because it wasn't part of their job duties at the time. So, you know, there was some finger pointing at them and I'll say that we have corrected that portion of it. So we have, like I said, policies and procedures set up for the maintenance personnel on a regular weekly maintenance program as well as after the use of the program or after the use of the tractor. I would like to recommend at this time that the council, regardless of your decision, that when we do buy the tractor, that it's only operated by city personnel or qualified signed off people within the community that have been checked off on it so that we're not running into the same problem. The tractor in the past was run too high RPM and damaged quite often. So we're just trying to rectify that problem and keep a good, long running tractor. I took several opportunities trying to get bids. They didn't come back very fast, as you all know. I thank some members of the council that were assisting me also at getting some of the bids. I was on the phone and emailed as up to four o'clock this afternoon with some of the individuals, just so I could be ready for council tonight. If you want a tractor immediately, there's only one in the packet that's ready to go for pickup. The others are, would be on a, kind of a three to four month out window. The other ones in the packet are used, but with very low hours on it. And those, those came from some of the bids that were given to me by the council members. So it's been a rough process trying to get these bids. There's also, and they were very quick and very helpful. Don't get me wrong, but it's going to be a long way out. We also have American versus, you know, out of, out of country issues as far as getting parts, things like that. So all thanks for the council to consider. Are there any questions from the council? I did go out and measure everything, gave them all the depth of everything and gave them everything that I thought would be needed. It's not a red fire engine, so I'm, I'm trying everything I can to, to give you everything possible and I'm, I'm becoming better and better at this. But if it was a fire engine, I'd have this hands down, but I just, please don't, don't throw too many things at me, but I'd be glad to try to answer anything at all.
Is the original tractor still available?
It's, we have moved it to the corp yard for multiple reasons, but.
Don't know your, your original idea.
It's, it's all the way in the back of the packet. That wasn't, that wasn't up there yet. My mayor, there is, it's, there's two or three, including the, the, the blue one, the
New Holland.
New, yeah, I thought that was a brand new one. I spoke to the, the sales rep today and he said that was a used one also with very low hours. So there's only one in the whole packet that was immediate use and could be in mid April. And that was one of the John Deere's, the fifty one hundred series. Excuse me, the fifty ninety E, open operator, which means it's not a closed cab. It's, everything's open. You're going to, multiple reasons why I did not want to present a closed cab to everybody. And it was, it was a lot of expense, a lot of added features that we're going to have to do maintenance on, even if we do a lease option or a mail out purchase with the warranty and guarantee. We still have a lot of maintenance to take care of as far as an air conditioning, et cetera, when this is only going to be used in the arena or the sewer treatment plant.
So the New Holland is a year old, correct?
Correct. I believe, yeah, it has. Excuse me, I, please don't laugh. I grabbed Debbie's glasses by accident, so no. It has a hundred. Believe it was a hundred and, no, excuse me, it has five hundred and sixteen hours on it.
And that one without the bucket?
Correct.
Is?
Forty-four.
Yeah.
Let me jump in real quick. So it's really confusing because it looked like there was only like two of these that were used. So you're saying there's only one that's new?
That is, as of today, when I confirmed it with, after I gave the bids that were given to me and I presented it into the council packet for your review, I contacted them today for the last minute to say, you know, I just, I've got to go before council. So which are these? And the only one that was currently new was the one John Deere. The rest are all the used models.
Right. Which was the, was that the fifty ninety E?
Correct.
Okay, so I got the fifty ninety E at sixty two thousand.
Correct.
Okay, I've got the fifty one fifteen M, which was a twenty twenty one new old stock. So that was still new or it was a couple of months ago for seventy. There's another fifty one fifteen M for sixty seven. Did it look like it was new?
There, when, when you say used, I mean, they're not ten years old. They're one or two years old with very low, very low hours.
These look new, so.
Right.
In my opinion, so the fifty nineties are a lot lighter weight tractor, which I'm going to defer to Allison for, you know, do you need a heavier one? But for me, for, you know, another fifteen thousand dollars, you got a much bigger, heavier tractor that you can use. I know you're not going to use it, but if, if things change and the, you know, arena went away or whatever, that you could utilize in the rest of the city. So personally like to buy a new tractor unless you have a screaming deal one, you know, with five hundred hours or less. But it was, I don't know anything about New Holland's. They're made different parts of the world in different, different countries, so.
New Holland was the kind we had last time.
Right. And, yeah, I, I think, you know, you can't go wrong with it, with a John Deere and, and.
My biggest thing I'd like to point out to the council is the right horsepower.
Right.
And we were completely under, underpowered with the last one.
This one is a hundred horsepower, right?
Right. Yeah, everything on here, like I said, in the bid I requested. It'll between the ninety and a hundred and fifteen, so.
And they're all four wheel drive?
Yes.
And they all have a three point hydraulics?
Yes, for the rear, yeah. Not for the front. We just have the weighted weights in the front.
Were you gonna like finance this or just pay one type cash?
That would be up to the council on this. They do have a finance program as well as they have the cash, you know, but we were able to secure through one of the bids or through the John Deere, the source well, which reduces our costs dramatically down. If we could buy direct, it'd be through the CMS, but we're not involved with, or we are. Okay, we could actually, we could avoid any of the dealers and go directly with the company, which we reduce it down even further.
I brought this up last time. I'm totally against that. The oldest tractor you get should be the best. We've got over fifty eight million dollars in equipment outside of town here. Eight full time mechanics and I guarantee you not one of them would tell you to buy a brand new tractor. That's the biggest mistake you would ever make. We get them, we lease them, they blow up about every two months. Of course, they're under warranty, but you will be down all the time. I totally agree with your first choice. That's my opinion.
Which one was that?
Yes, but if the tractor is only at the arena, that makes a big difference.
Makes no difference. The death system blow up on them.
So which one was the original? Is that the seventy thousand dollar one?
Yeah, which was your first choice?
I have to go back here and look at the, the original and it would be in the council packet of November. I have to go back here and look at the, the original and it would be in the council packet of, uh, November.
Yeah, but that one I had like, that was really high mileage.
That's one I have.
And it was like sixty thousand dollars. Yeah.
Yes. Sixty-one.
With no warranty, nothing.
Sixty-one. Twenty twenty-one, right?
I don't think it's in here.
No, I didn't, I didn't put it as part of the, this packet because you had rejected it in November, so I didn't even bother with that.
So all of these are available for a lease to own?
Correct.
Okay. And which one's the soonest?
The brand new one is ready for pickup in the middle of, uh, of April. The rest are, uh, would have to be moved around on a timeframe.
Is that one of the John Deere's?
Mm-hmm.
It's the John Deere, the seventy thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar one?
Now, the fifth, the sixty-two one, the fifty ninety E.
Trying to bounce here, sorry, council.
Look at it. I've got the four John Deere's in front of me. So, I mean, let's start with the easy one, which is the price, so everybody can follow it. So I've got a seventy thousand, I've got a forty-one, I've got a sixty-one, and I've got a fifty-two.
The sixty-one is what I have listed down here as the.
Is the new and ready.
Two in April. It's the John Deere.
It says, yeah, doing mid-April.
Station tractor.
And it's a two-year, uh, two-year front to back and then six-year for the powertrain.
And if you buy the bigger ones, they don't have a powertrain warranty.
Yes. Well, they would, but if they're used, then it's going to go down on the years.
Yes. The new ones don't either because they are not going to, they're, um, they don't know how you're using it. So they, they don't do the transmissions.
Okay. So then number four is the brand new one, the twenty twenty-three?
How much, would you go with price so we can?
Equipment, the, the grand total is fifty-two thousand.
Okay. But this one is brand new and not currently available for until.
Two thousand hours on it.
Okay, that's, that's way used. And the sixty-one is a new, brand new.
Brand new.
Okay.
This one here.
Open for lease. Yeah, this one.
Fifty-nine eighty is the new one. Yeah.
And that one's, we can do a lease to own.
Correct.
Um, the rest of these are used, two thousand hours on that one. The twenty-one, uh, the seventy thousand, you don't know how many hours it has. That's the one you said you thought was new and is now actually used.
Correct.
And did you know how many hours it had by chance or no?
He did not have that in front of him on that time in the conversation on the phone today.
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to bring it back if you need it. But I really, again, I want to emphasize, no matter what decisions made, this is a city operated only tractor. So we're not having to come before you again. And, uh, the civilian, the, the citizens should not have access to the keys to this. And in the future, we need to lock it up better.
So are, are, do you have a recommendation on which you, the most recent, the sixty-one?
Um, I would like to refer that to council for your decision because, because I, 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 I appreciate all you do and I want you guys to get what you want.
Okay, fair enough.
Well, let's, why don't we start with eliminating?
Well, I think we should get it, the two thousand hours that they've had. It's got two thousand hours and it's a year old. And seems like it's probably been ridden pretty hard.
Twenty, right, twenty thousand dollars left.
I have two that.
I've got a fifty, I've got a fifty, fifty-two, fifty-two thousand, sixteen dollars.
Yep. That one has two thousand hours. And then the other one, two thousand eleven, has two thousand hours.
Well, the two thousand third, the twenty-three would have some warranty left on it. Yes?
Correct.
Okay. The eleven is going to have no warranty on it.
Oh, let's get around.
So I, I would say we get rid of the eleven because it has no warranty and has two thousand hours on it. That would be my personal recommendation.
How old is the one for sixty-one thousand? There's no.
It is, it's new. This is a new one. The sixty-one is brand new.
And that one's, that one could be delivered in April?
Correct.
That's my choice.
And the two thousand one, we don't know what its towers are and it's an unknown quantity. So I'm going to have to pass on that.
Yeah.
Door. Not having that info on it. So I would say if we can do a lease to own for the sixty-one, six-eight, sixty-eight, that would be in our best interest. Seems to be the best purchase. In my.
I agree.
Opinion.
I agree. Unless, you know, you want to get a bigger one and pay more money, but.
This one's pretty big. Can't think we would need more than a hundred horsepower.
You would know.
No, not really. I just know what the other one was.
The other was a forty and, and they, I was clearly told by the groomers that no less than a ninety.
Well.
You know, so a hundred to a hundred and fifteen is what we're looking at here on all these. So.
But there's a lot that goes into what you're pulling. So the drag that the arena has right now is probably seven hundred pounds. The groomer I had was closer to two thousand. So that's depending on what you're doing to the ground and how much water you get on the ground is going to affect your tractor. So as well as the drivers, it's also who's managing the ground. So the ground is workable, but when it's rock hard, yeah, you're going to put more torque on the tractor.
Do you, did they give you any lease information?
It was in the packets.
It's in there. I'm sorry, I missed it.
The, the financing options are available.
Like seven percent.
Yeah.
That's kind of.
Standard.
What would you recommend on that, uh, Jody and Amy? I mean, I'm kind of liking to pay fourteen thousand a year for five years, but that's just me. But.
Right.
Yeah, but it's, that's why I'm asking. I mean, would you rather buy it cash money or would you rather finance it?
I'm like, Amy, I don't like paying interest.
What's the rate?
Seven, seven.
Buy sixty-one thousand. I don't want to outlay of sixty-one thousand dollars either.
Yeah, that's going to be a hit, you know, in the budget.
I, I would recommend that you purchase it outright. You're getting four percent on your interest and you're paying seven percent in interest. You might as well just purchase, you know, you need it. Just be done if you're going to purchase.
I agree.
I agree.
I think we buy it. Pick a tractor.
Let's just.
And I think you buy the sixty-one thousand, six hundred sixty-eight.
Yep.
The John Deere five fifty ninety E open operator station tractor, um, I think I'd make a motion, we buy that.
In a second? Oh, we need to open it up for public comment. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much, council. Appreciate your time.
Now you're a skilled tractor buyer, as well as fire truck buyers.
I would like to stick with, no, no, thank you very much.
Everybody lost us back there. Is it, we buying the brand new one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, that's a smart move. Because anytime you buy something huge, you don't know what somebody did to it to get rid of. We're finally doing something right. Thank you very much.
Okay, write that down. Write it down. Okay.
So we had a motion?
Yeah, and a second.
Okay. Hold it.
We had a second. All in favor?
Oh, yeah.
Hi.
So we know which one we're getting, right?
Sixty-one, that one, the green one.
The fifty ninety E. Not the blue one.
The green one.
The green, green one.
Mine's are all black and white, so.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
Is the other tractor not working at all?
Yeah.
So can we look at surplus in that? Maybe get a couple of bucks or maybe the wheels are the same size and you can.
No, 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 no.
Thank you very much, council for hearing me. I, I'm sorry again for the delay. Yes, the, the old tractor is down against the, uh, fence at the corporation yard and it's in the surplus mode right now. So, uh, it'll be up to you to which direction it goes.
Perfect.
What, what happened to it again? Now, is it, did the engine seize? Is that?
It, it, it'll run, but it's, it's, there's no compression to it. It's not going to, it barely made it up onto the trailer.
Somebody, somebody can fix it.
You're late, Ken. Thank you.
Nice work, chief.
They're calling your name.
Any more public comment? Anyone on Zoom, John? Is there anybody on Zoom? Okay, closed public comment. Uh, overview of wastewater treatment plant.
Good. Catherine, our engineer and wastewater consultant will provide the overview. I want to point out that we're looking for direction and should you provide the direction to staff, we will come back with a budget adjustment. But we wanted to kind of give the overview and the layout first so that you weren't caught up with sticker shock.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Ms. Mayor and council. Nice to see you guys again tonight. Um, just, uh, the last time I was here was around the end of November, um, and the council, uh, based on wastewater committee's recommendation, had us go out and do a few meetings with some of the wastewater stakeholders. And we've done that, done some more work related to a couple of items that were authorized at that time. So I'm here to provide an update on that and then talk about next steps. We also did meet with the wastewater committee again early February and, um, the information shared today is based on the direction we got at that meeting as well. So with that, we'll start with the next slide. Um, so for today's presentation, I'm going to, um, you received a report from me, which kind of laid out all of the work that needed to be done in sort of a timeline fashion, kind of combined the treatment plant and the Cowriff facility. But for today's presentation, I'm going to separate that out because sometimes when thinking about those issues, it's better to think about them separately. Um, and then just kind of finish with a summary that again brings that all back together and really talks about the next year and a half, what needs to be accomplished and then, uh, vision into the long, the next five years. So with that, let's talk about the treatment plant. Um, a couple of slides forward, please. Um, so this is going back to when I was first here in May twenty twenty-three. Um, and we came and we talked about the, uh, treatment plant and kind of what was needed to move that work forward. As you recall, we'd been working on the permit and at the time we're, um, looking at a different direction. And so we came and talked about, um, some of the critical needs for the facility. So, um, with the existing treatment plant, the real critical issue, um, at hand with respect to permitting is the existing cease and desist order, um, which effectively says that the city needs to eliminate the use of pond six and seven due to groundwater contamination concerns. Um, the city has taken quite a bit of action at that facility, lining the ponds, doing a lot of other activities. There's been significant improvements in groundwater quality. And as I presented back then, there's a lot of data and information now that, um, wasn't available to the regional board. And we think, uh, justification for removing the cease and desist order, adopting a new one based on the new information and then, uh, moving forward in a different direction. Um, the key real issue about, um, that still is really out there is pond six. As you can see, it's adjacent to the creek and, um, the concern is that, that there's a hydraulic connection between the, the water that's percolating in that pond and the creek. And so that could become a limiting factor for continued use of the percolation ponds. Um, but ultimately where the city's at and kind of the difference contractual relate situations you're in, percolation disposal is probably a, um, a long-term need for the treatment plant. So working with the regional board, trying to figure out how we can continue to accommodate that type of, uh, disposal of the water during the winter months. Because if you can't do that, you're going to have to store it. And then if you have to store it, then you have to recycle it somewhere else. And then that requires other long-term agreements where, you know, may, may not be the long-term best interest of the city. So, um, we talked about that a good bit. The regional board, um, has been, we've had some informal discussions with them at this point about that approach and that they were part of the regional, the partner meetings that we've had, we had two meetings, they were a part of that. We talked about that topic both during the meeting and then offline. And they seem very receptive to hearing the city's position on that. So that activity is, um, something that needs to start moving forward. Um, we've been a little, I'd say distracted, if that's the right word, dealing with issues related to the Cowriff. Um, but, and the treatment plant's been kind of put on hold. So all of those first three bullets are, um, kind of not a lot has happened other than those informal conversations with the board so far. Um, the fourth bullet, which is working with the regional partners to develop the region-wide master plan that identifies preferred strategies for meeting everyone's disposal needs, that's been a major focus. Um, that's been the focus of the two workshops that we had. And, um, and then tying that back into the work we're doing at the Cowriff. So that's mostly what we'll focus on today. Um, and then ultimately, once we kind of can get everybody moving in that direction, there's some planning work that would need to be done to define costs and roles and responsibilities, contractual arrangements, all that fun stuff. Um, and then ultimately move, once you know where you're going, that's when you need to apply for a new permit. So until that's worked out, um, the recommendation is, um, work with the regional board. Um, if there's interim changes that can be made to the current permit, um, which I think there are some changes that we can make, that'll, that'll make, um, compliance a little bit easier and also, um, ideally like, you know, address some of the issues that are going on at the treatment plant to kind of buy some time until we can get the long-term vision laid out. Um, that would be, uh, also an immediate next step. So the next slide. So just kind of as I said, the key thing we've done is working with the regional partnerships. So, um, the, this is the vision that's been presented and we're kind of just reminding everyone. You guys have seen this now a couple of times, but, um, there's folks in the audience that maybe haven't. But, um, basically, you know, the city with the, the property that the city owns, the storage ponds, the treatment ponds, there's resources there that can be leveraged to help facilitate a more regional view of how the wastewater is managed through the system. Um, the Cowriff itself also provides a great benefit because it treats the water to that tertiary standard, which allows for unrestricted reuse. So you've got the golf course obviously as an existing customer. Um, but there's, um, the water bottom site, uh, which is an agricultural site. Um, even the town field, um, if that received tertiary water would have benefits to the city as well as to them as a customer. Um, and maybe has a higher value to, um, the rancheria, uh, group if they receive tertiary water as opposed to what they're receiving now. Um, a local mining facilities approached the city about receiving recycled water. Um, I know that there's been some discussion at past meetings about, you know, Amador water giving truck filling water, construction truck filling water, and that could be recycled water. That could be, uh, something that could be provided. Um, other landscape uses, whether that's landscaping within the Castle Oaks development, you know, along the roadways, that type of thing. Parks within the city all could be irrigated with recycled water. And then finally, uh, maybe there's other agricultural users out there that would be interested in this flow. So the tertiary water really does have a high value, uh, much higher than the undisinfected secondary flow that's currently being produced. So the vision would be to work with the partners to expand the capacity of the tertiary plant, expand the number of customer bases and then make it a mutually beneficial project for everybody. Um, so in the near term, we were working at the interconnect project and we've talked about that quite a bit. That was the topic of the last meeting that we had. And, um, at the time we had said, hey, you know, with this interconnect, one strategy that you could approach, which might would have lead us towards this regional vision and have mutual benefit would be to bring all the water from the ARSA pipeline through pond five, provide some treatment of that water prior to discharging it to the Calriff facility. So basically it would be blending all those flows together, treating it to try to remove some of the VOCs, settle out solids that are maybe coming out of Preston reservoir and then directing it over as this blended flow that then could be used for on the golf course and then ultimately for these other users. The, uh, so all of that kind of was what we said, hey, this would be a really great way to approach this project. Get all the regional partners involved, everyone to agree that, hey, let's move in this direction. It solves all of these problems that we're kind of addressing right now with the Cowriff. The direction was we, well, let's go, let's go approach them. Let's go talk to them about this, see what they think, see if they like the idea. Um, and maybe we would move in that direction. So we had two meetings, one in December and then another one in, um, that, end of January. Um, and, uh, the next slide. So, oh, well, part of those meetings, we also reached out to the Jackson Ranch area. So, oh, well, part of those meetings, we also reached out to the Jackson Ranch area. So we kind of talked about the town field and then Woodard Bottom. So just sort of here's sort of another kind of picture of what those irrigation sites look like, their size, just to kind of give you a sense of what what this could look like in terms of delivery of water. You can see the light blue line on there, which is the existing Woodard Bottom Pipeline that goes essentially from where the Cowriff is all the way out to Woodard Bottom. And then along that route, that pipeline gets very close to where the city delivers water to the town field. So we think if you could bring tertiary water into that, you could easily supply water to both of those facilities with very little added infrastructure costs. The rancheria indicated they are interested in in the water supply. They would be particularly if it met tertiary requirements. They they are concerned about water quality. They are concerned about VOCs. Those issues would need to be addressed for them to enter into any agreement. The other clear thing that they said was that, you know, they would need to have some sort of commitment to water supply. And that's and that's understandable because if they're putting in infrastructure, they're going to need that kind of commitment. And I think the response back again, very informally, but is right, if we're making commitments to water quality and water supply, that means there's a financial exchange going on here. This isn't free water anymore, right? Free water is water where you don't get those things, not free water is where you do, right? So that sort of the groundwork has been laid for that. But again, there's a lot of steps that would need to be made before you'd even begin to start negotiations with these guys as a partner. First step being getting all the regional partners to agree to expand the tertiary plant. So next slide. So we did as part of the work and meeting with the partners talked about like how much the tertiary plant would need to be expanded in order to meet these various demands. So right now, the capacity of the plant's 1.2 million gallons per day. So just the golf course alone uses about 1 million gallons per day at a peak period, right? So without, right now, there is some available capacity to deliver tertiary water to another user based on current use on the town field. If we expanded just to just to provide to that area, it would use basically the full capacity of the tertiary plant as it stands today. And then to look towards Woodard Bottom, you could maybe almost double the amount of recycled water being produced, maybe more and maybe more really. Part of the use on the town field and Woodard Bottom really depends on what crops they're growing. You know what they would do with the water. So that's why it's presented as a range because there's just too many unknowns at this point to say for sure, this is how much water that that area would use. But it's a very large irrigated irrigated parcel. Impressions from the initial discussion is that the the partners, I would say, were somewhat receptive to the to the ideas presented. But there was really no clear decision or direction made. I mean, there's a lot of up in the air right now regarding the 2007 agreement. And I think the general impression was that needed to get resolved before any deeper discussions could be had. But it did appear that folks would be interested in moving in that direction. In terms of like the near term solution and running the water through pond five, there needs to be a better understanding of how that could improve VOCs. If that is going to be a solution, sort of long term or just or intermittent BMP, what that would look like. So that would be something that would have to be worked out. And then, of course, what would be the cost to provide any treatment and disposal capacity? And that really fits into like this bigger idea of a planning study that would be ideally a joint partnership, everybody kind of coming together to develop some kind of study like that. But I think probably one of the best things that came out of all this work in addition to just moving this concept forward was that the partners really do have a better understanding. We've we spent a good bit of time informing them about some of the issues of the Cowriff with the instrumentation and control. The need that the fact that the plant is 30 years old, it needs a lot of maintenance and that there's some costs coming down the road regardless of whether we move in a regional solution or not. There's some costs coming down the road that are going to be incurred for their continued use of that facility. So I think that was good for them to understand that. And then finally, kind of then circling back on the interconnect project and where we are with that. So we didn't get, you know, a clear like, yay, let's go do this response. And ultimately, you know, I think the biggest concern right now is the 2007 agreement and trying to move into a better place with that with the partners and absolve that agreement and start a new agreement. And so that process, because the 2007 agreement doesn't acknowledge the interconnect, it doesn't allow for discharge from the city's wastewater treatment plant to the Cowriff. Moving in that direction without the regional partners in support of it would probably result in some derailment of that process. That really that the best way to move forward at this point would be to couple the conversations about the 2007 agreement with this idea of a regional partnership and move it forward as a group as opposed to trying to, you know, shoehorn in because ultimately you could end up you know, in in some legal situations that would, you know, not be conducive to, you know, achieving your long term goals. And then and then, as we said, I think for the city in the long term, working with these partners is probably going to provide the most cost effective strategy for making sure that the Cowriff assets are properly maintained. And that can they can provide benefits to all the partners. So there's a lot of costs and things that are going to be incurred in the near term and having them at the table to help encumber some of those costs is going to be beneficial to the city. So as hard as it may be continuing to work together is 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 our recommendation at this point. So I'll stop there. Maybe we could talk about that before we jump into the Cowriff needs. If you guys have any questions or thoughts about that.
In order to move this forward, we would have to enter into a JPA, a true JPA agreement, correct?
I think that that would be my recommendation. I think that that would need to be, you know, obviously negotiated with others and and legal folks as well. But I think that would be a really great way to move forward because that would kind of separate management of these facilities from the day to day political life of each individual agency and create an independent agency that would oversee the work and hopefully create a more more you know, cooperative relationship amongst everybody because you're all you all have a stake then and 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 what's how to move things forward.
Was there any discussion of the JPA in your meetings?
It did come up. We, you know, I kind of the the discussion, I would say it wasn't a robust discussion or a decision on that, but the the term did get thrown out. We talked about it. I think that there was, you know, some interest in it from, you know, the ARSA folks and, you know, there I think there was some question from CDCR whether they could be in a JPA, but so we did, we talked about it, but there was no like, I don't know, Amy, if you want to comment about that beyond that.
Have you, do you have additional meetings that you're going to be setting up along to go through this and nail down some of these points?
We've asked to be to present to ARSA.
Okay, we've asked to present to ARSA and I think that at this point, there's also a concern about just ideally getting to a point with the 2007 agreement that there's no longer any, you know, outstanding litigation on that before we take it too much further. Because it was clear that people were having a hard time talking openly, given some of the outstanding legal things going on. And so it's as long as that's hanging over the room, it's it's a lot of me talking. Not a lot of them talking.
And has you have you has also agreed to the presentation or?
They weren't opposed to it.
Okay, that's not an answer.
It was just a timing issue. It sounded like I requested for Catherine to get on their meeting for tomorrow. But that wasn't an option for whatever reason. So we'll try again for
For the next one.
Any input, any comment? Okay, you're doing good. All right, let's move on then to the Cowriff. Okay, so yeah, there we go. Okay, so the Cowriff, so we, you know, we we've got the Title 22 report. You guys recall, we started down that path and the one of the critical parts of doing that report is documenting the control strategy for the treatment plant. That if there was a, if there was a water quality concern, there would be the appropriate reaction by the SCADA system to divert flows and what are those alarms and all of that? So we went out to the plant to investigate that, make sure we could document what was going on. And it was clear that there was a lot of instrumentation that had been removed from the facility over the years. And that there was, you know, a lot of instrumentation and control. Things that were no longer present from the original design. So we had come back to the city and said, hey, you know, just based on our initial visit, this is what we saw. We need to dig into this a little bit more. So we got an amendment to the Title 22 agreement, went out, did a more detailed condition assessment of just the instrumentation and controls. And then came up with a list of near term and then ultimately long term improvements. The near term improvements are basically to get some of those critical pieces of equipment that were not properly maintained or were removed back up and running so that you can get Title 22 compliant as quickly as possible. It's it's a relatively short list, but as we're digging into it, Telstar, who's been working with the you folks for a while to do those type of projects out there has indicated that when they've gone out to do other kind of improvement similar that, you know, it always ends up being a little bit more complicated because not just the piece of equipment's gone, but the wires are gone or whatever's gone. And so they are spending the time to really investigate what it's going to take to do just this initial step. And then ultimately, once we get that quote from them, we'll need to look at it and say, can the city afford all this in one chunk? Does it need to be split out? What are the absolute critical, what are not? And and then we would come back to, you know, with work with the city manager and then ultimately you guys potentially to get approval. I think the dollar amount is high enough that you probably are going to want to hear about what it is before you before you move forward with it. We would like to get that done as quickly as possible. In working with Waterstone right now, talking to them, they they feel comfortable, they want to get it done, obviously, because they're concerned about, you know, just continuing to manage the plant and compliance. But understand that it may not occur at this point before the beginning of the irrigation season, but they're committed to working with Telstar while the plant is running to make sure that everything can kind of get done as quickly as possible. So as soon as we get that quote, it's hoping to have it by today, but they're still working on it. Probably any day now we'll have it and then we can kind of come back and share with you what that is. But I would say like, it's, you know, probably in the order of magnitude of about $200,000. So it is a significant amount of money. And like I said, I think we can parse out some of it if it ends up being just too much. The SCADA upgrade design, now this is in the the packet for today. We get, we did give the the scope of work for that. That is basically the SCADA system is the computer system that runs the treatment plant. You could imagine if you were operating, you are operating a treatment plant, imagine running off a 30 year old computer, 35 year old computer. I mean, effectively, that's what this treatment plant is doing. So it is, it is
Pong of wastewater.
The pong of wastewater, exactly. It is in desperate need of an upgrade. So of all of the condition related things, you know, looking at the plant like that is probably the most critical to get this plant so that it can run in more of an automated mode. It has been run in hand or in manual now for like the last probably two years or so, maybe longer. I'm not sure. So that is, we are recommending that you move forward with that. And then we had previously talked about the interconnect project. So now, and there was an intent to use those ARPA funds for that. We believe there's still enough time, if a decision's made soon, to redirect and use that for this SCADA upgrade project instead. This of all the things on the list, we think is probably should be the biggest priority. Because if that treatment plant were to fail, it would be a pretty, pretty major catastrophe. And then ultimately, part of that scope of work also includes this condition assessment. So what we would do is we have the mechanical team go out there and the electrical team go out there and then do a more detailed assessment of that infrastructure. The goal of that will be to outline an entire, you know, 10 year CIP for the treatment plant so that now you have a justifiable cost schedule that you can now work with the partners to say, hey, this is what it's going to cost to keep this plant going for the next 20 years. Let's all figure out how we're going to cover these and and make and and have something to work from. So that's the goal of that condition assessment is really to come out of that with like the right tools. So the next slide shows some previous work that was done in 2020 that had outlined a bunch of projects that needed to be done. There's that that report is pretty light on details on exactly what these elements are. It did have a cost of 1.6 million, which is about what the probably the cost of just the SCADA system is. So basically that work isn't really fully complete. It didn't have, it didn't do the the level of detail needed to really say, hey, this is what this is going to cost. And I I think you guys probably appreciate this. I mean, when you're working with multiple partners, right? That like having that that solid justification, that engineering analysis that says this is what this costs, that that's the kind of detail that you need in order to get people to say, okay, we get it. We understand that why this is needed. So we're really recommending that. And then next, if you just kind of flip to the next one. I do want to point out that the replacement of the hypochlorite tank, the installation of the new chemical metering pumps, and then the upgrades to the SCADA control system, those are part of the the improvements that we've been talking about. So the the near term project with Telstar will address the first two items. And then the, well, the tank's been bought, but it needs to be hooked up and then connected. It's been hooked up, even better news. So now we just need to connect it to the new metering pumps. That'll be great. And then the SCADA, of course, is covered there. And then you can see there's the other list of items that again, other than kind of hearing from the operators about these, we've not done any detailed investigation of what's really needed there and what's the best approach to address whatever future improvements are needed. Next slide. So the other thing that was talked about previously and the council approved was moving forward on a pre-treatment program for the Cowriff. That was initiated in late 2023. The initial scope of work was for us to kind of confer with the regional board, with legal folks, and then kind of come up with a some language for a sewer use ordinance. Based on the discussions we had with the various entities out there, including the regional board. Unfortunately, because the discharges to the Cowriff are outside of city limits, adopting an ordinance really would not give you a lot of legal authority over those folks. Yes.
Well, they're not outside city limits.
They are not, but well, it you have talked to a lawyer about this, but
Preston is inside city limits.
Right.
So is CDC.
It is, but I think because they're
Because the
Yeah, I don't, I'm not a lawyer, nor do I play one on TV. But this is my understanding that it would be difficult, if not impossible, for the city to have any sort of legal authority over those agencies. Right now, the 2007 agreement does require that Cowriff meet the city's existing permit water quality requirements. And that we're moving towards an update to that permit. The first step is to get this Title 22 report. The very next step is to get that new permit. So that is probably going to be the avenue in which the city can control water quality. So the faster we move in that direction, the better. But the the state will not probably move towards adopting a new permit until we can show the the plant is Title 22 compliant. So again, that's kind of why that priority on the SCADA, the instrumentation, getting that done so that now they can adopt a permit for the facility. They're also taking action on to update and enforce the the permitted sources. So you guys are, I'm sure aware of that. It's been public information that they've requested that the CDCR submit information for them to get a new permit, which will also likely include water quality requirements that will basically include requirements that should ideally impact what's what they're discharging regardless of where the flow goes. So there's other actions in place. And because of that, and because of the limitations, again, the recommendation has been, let's not continue going down this path of pre-treatment. Why spend money on something that's not going to really provide you much benefit? Let's let's redirect the city's resources to where you're going to get the highest and best use. So look, looking beyond, so kind of the the next 12 to 36 months. So the initially, we've just submitted the scope for the design for the SCADA improvements. The goal would be to have that completed to a level by the end of this year so that it could be used as justification to encumber the the ARPA funds. Then you have two years to complete the construction. It should be no no problem meeting that timeline. So we've we've laid out a schedule that can do that. And then ultimately, so then over the next year and a half, that project would be completed. And then that's what's shown there. And then in that same timeline, we'd be working on the permit renewal. Assuming we we're able to get through all the Title 22 stuff in the next six to 12 months. And then looking beyond that, that's where those condition related improvements that'll be developed through these initial efforts. We don't know exactly what that looks like yet, but that's what we're thinking beyond. Once we get SCADA done, once we get the new permit, once you're kind of, everything's looking good on the facility as is, then looking a more long term on what we need to make sure this is then looking a more long-term on what we need to make sure this is something that's viable for another twenty, thirty years. So any questions about that? Okay. Good. You guys are easy. All right. So this is a lot of words, um, but and this is basically kind of what's summarized in your report. Um, but I just wanted to talk about this is what to expect or what's going on right now. So just kind of focusing on, you know, this fiscal year is almost over. There's another one right around the corner. So kind of what are we doing in the next, you know, twelve months or so? So we've got the Title twenty-two report. Underneath that, we've got the overspray study. So we talked about that at the last meeting. That's the study where we look at the BMPs, develop a best management practice list to allow for the kind of golf course to continue um irrigating up to the edge of people's property, but not on to people's property. And then what are the best practices to manage that long-term? And then ultimately, there would be a training associated with that. Um, we have talked with the very, I talked with Amy about this and others, the wastewater committee about this. Ultimately, it's the city's responsibility to make sure that those BMPs are implemented. So moving forward, the city really should assign a individual that is responsible for managing um, the permit, the overs- not managing, overseeing the irrigation on the golf course, mainly that there's not overspray, there's not runoff, there's not um, ponding water. So there's a list of things that the permit requires that be inspected on a weekly basis. That really, it should be probably be the city's responsibility to make sure that that those inspections are happening and that reporting is happening because I don't think it's been consistent in the past. Um, the, like I said, on the interconnect and the pre-treatment, we recommend those be put on hold for now. Um, let's redirect the resources towards, you know, some of the more immediate needs like the near-term instrumentation and control improvements and the SCADA design and that mechanical, electrical condition assessment. Then um, early in next fiscal year, we would recommend then moving forward with the re- going back, revisiting the redecision and reassurance of the cease and desist order and the wastewater treatment plant modi- modifications and making sure, trying to get that regulatory stuff lined up a little bit better. Once we get some of these Title twenty-two issues behind us. And then moving forward with that critical headworks and influent pump station project that's been um, kind of talked about for quite a long time, um, and is probably way, way past due. So um, we are, we recommend starting with design in that in next year and then thinking about construction once kind of the SCADA, you're kind of over the SCADA hump, moving into the pump station hump. So you're not doing too much all at one time. So that's the the layout of the schedule, thinking in those terms. So the next slide, um, oh, just shows kind of the Title twenty-two report. That's been authorized. The green items are on um, were a part of your packet for today. Um, again, no action on those, but just making you aware of what they are, what the, what the fee is for those, and then crossing out the two projects that are, we're recommending to put on hold. And then here's kind of an overall timeline of projects. So um, you can see, you know, but here, this fiscal year and then into next fiscal year, taking us down through the headworks and the influent pump station. And then moving into the new CalRIF permit, um, whatever evaluations would be required out of the new cease and desist order. Um, and then ultimately that planning and that regional planning process. So we're looking at the twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven timeline more to move into that regional planning and that visioning between now and then. It's kind of getting a lot of ducks in the row, hopefully getting all the regional partners to come to the table, get a new agreement in place so that we can move forward in those those following years um, with the right, everything in order. And then uh, finally, right now, without any other information, um, we did put together some budget information. Um, a lot of this was derived from efforts done by others. Um, so all we did was took what was previously provided, updated it to current dollars. Um, and then on the the CalRIF, we did increase the budget on that based on what we do know about the SCADA system at this point. Um, and then added the permitting and planning studies, which million dollars honestly is is a bit of a wag right now. Um, kind of depends on the regional partners and where everything's going. We just, we don't know. Um, but this would be a really good starting place. I understand you guys are looking at rates right now. So this would be a really good place to start in thinking about that with the understanding that probably in, you know, a year, two, year and a half from now, these numbers would be updated with much more clarity. And then hopefully also uh, better clarity on what of these dollar items would be covered through that regional partnership, right? Because there's a big, uh, a big, almost half of that money, about four point five million is really related to the CalRIF, which is um, should not be borne solely by the city. Uh, because obviously that facility is, provides benefits to, to, to your partners as well. Um, and then, so finally, recommendations for today is to prioritize those time-sensitive, emission-critical CalRIF and wastewater treatment plant improvements that we talked about. Plan for these near-term facility improvement costs. So make sure that you've got the money coming in so you can pay for these critical upgrades. Um, when we say approve the scope of services, we mean just kind of the approach with the understanding that the budget would be approved later. But for the um, in addition to the golf course overspray and the SCADA, the other item that um is just, uh, we've, the work that I'm doing here, the work we've been doing with the regional partners has all been through that as-needed contract that you guys approved back in July. We've expended those resources at this point, um, and it needs to be re-upped, I guess, is is one way to look at it. And in particular, with the new city manager coming on, having us as a resource to help bring, you know, keep the continuity going. Um, that's, that's what that funding would be for. So um, it would allow us to kind of continue in this oversight guidance role um, for until effectively that money is gone and then we can figure it out there, I guess. Um, and then finally, um, which this is not necessarily an action for today, but that 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 more like a decision that directing the ARPA funds towards the SCADA project and away from the interconnect, that was the previous concept, that that would be the direction the council would want to go with using those funds, um, because of the the critical need of that project. And that's, that is it.
I have a uh, quick question. As far as a SCADA system, that's one of the most expensive things we got going.
Yeah.
Are we able to put it out to bid or no? Because they control the license of that system from Telstar, because we got three different SCADA systems and of course, they're under license of three different ones. So it's a pain in the butt to get anyone to work on because they hold the license.
Yeah. So for the near-term instrumentation, like just getting that equipment replaced, we were going to use Telstar because that's, that's a pretty quick fix. The SCADA, part of the design process will be developing bid, uh, bid packet.
Okay.
Yeah, and working with the city uh, council as well as, you know, if you guys want Waterstone to be involved in kind of deciding, yeah, you know, what what that's, what the specs look like and kind of what your desired, you know, uh, equipment package might be. I mean, you could even pick independently of that bidding process. You could pick, you know, the type of PLCs you want. You could pick the type of uh, programming you want.
Okay.
The staff would do that for us and then present it to us.
Yeah, exactly.
Dominic, do you have any questions or?
Oh, I think it was well presented.
I do too. Councilwoman Ritten.
I'm, I'm good.
I'm good.
You're good.
Councilman Rhodes, are you?
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
So, um, Madam Mayor, what we'll plan on doing then is to go forward with all of these. There is a dollar amount that's included. What we'll do is we'll bring this back to your next meeting in April with a budget adjustment and we'll show kind of where we are in each of the funds and how everything's gonna shake out financially.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
So I will open it up to public comment.
There's some magic words in that report, you know, aeration helps mitigate
Can I get your name?
Jack Copeland.
Okay.
Aeration helps mitigate VOCs, long-term solution necessary for VOCs. I'm sure you're talking about long-lasting, small particle pharmaceuticals as well. My question is this, how often is that measured? Who measures this? Do you meet NIOSH standards for the water you're putting on the golf course, for example? And is that data made public?
Yeah, um, so the VOCs are, is your nail thing? It's okay. Uh, they're measured weekly, leaving the golf course for the tournament and coming into the CalRIF as well. All of the, even though there are detected VOCs, all of the water quality needs all out of the full standards.
Including NIOSH.
NIOSH. Now, and
National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health.
Yes, yes, they do. And I can, we can share those, that information.
In our monthly report.
It is, yeah, there's a monthly report generated. The the NIOSH criteria I could provide to um, Amy though, in comparison of the waterfall and to you guys specifically.
Is there a measurement of how much of the VOCs and how much of the small particle uh, long-lasting problem comes from the addition of Mule Creek water? This recent addition, or is this a persistent problem system-wide?
It, it, there, the, the VOCs that have been measured have been detected both directly from the discharge that come directly from Mule Creek, as well as the discharge from the um, reservoir. Um, what is not known is, is whether the VOCs are generated in the reservoir, like are from like historic discharge into the reservoir or they're coming from upstream. So there has basically been some monitoring completed. Part of the conversations we've had with the regional partners is needing to better characterize that. Where are they coming from and addressing it? Um, but it is a um, it is a, a major concern for the city. Um, and obviously, you know, the folks that are, are, you know, around the golf course. So it's, it's been an ongoing conversation and that's why we've been trying to
Yes, and I need to, this is public comment. So discussion back and forth really.
Thank you.
But you're welcome.
I really thought we got to ask answers. We get answers. I mean, it's supposed to be public comment. We're supposed to get answers up here, I think. Um, the one thing I would like, I, you guys, they blocked out the that went to the sewer meeting you guys had and you talked about hooking up to the, you call it the CDC line going down with Blue Black Road. I call it Stockton Highway. That is crazy. If you're going to run it out to Martin Bottom sometime, why don't you put it in the Arceline and put a gate valve on it, which would stop, stop them from dumping like I heard. They dumped eight hundred thousand gallons and the operator didn't even know where it come from. That man said it right here one day. Eight hundred thousand gallons, and he did say it. Anyway, the operator of the plant. And I don't know why you couldn't put a valve on that and run it back to the Arceline. And then if you want to use Woodford Bottom, even Martin Bottom, or even the, even the mine out there, it's already there. I mean, you don't have to replumb it. So why waste the money? And another thing I'd like to know, who's going to pay the nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar minus tertiary plant? Us citizens I own that aren't even hooked up to it? Who's going to pay that almost a million dollars? It's right on your budget. I ain't going to get an answer, huh? Who's going to pay for it? Us taxpayers are aren't even hooked up to it? And you want to raise our rates? Yeah.
Actually, can I address that?
Thank you.
So actually, our rate study is for our secondary plant. It is not for our tertiary plant. And when, with the discussion of our partners, the, the issues of cost have been addressed. Catherine has done a very good job saying, you know, that there is a shared cost because they are reaping the benefit of the golf course. I also want to point out, however, though, that the city is in agreement with the golf course to provide water and the golf course is an asset, a regional asset, and we also want to protect that too. So the city is weighing its options. Financially, it's going to have to continue to keep weighing its options, but that's what we're trying to do is look at all aspects so that we can share that cost based on the users needing to dispose of effluent and based on our commitments to the golf course. So we are taking all of that into consideration as we're doing the rate study and as Catherine's been approaching this with our regional partners.
Well, may I say this? When they built the golf course, we were told it wasn't going to cost us citizens unless anyone died. Here you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any more public comment on the wastewater treatment report? Close public comment. Moving on to
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent as usual.
Thank you.
Uh, item number two, discussion regarding agreement with Portlock International Recommendation for Information and Staff Direction.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This was brought up by Councilmember Rhodes and Mitchell for discussion. I will turn it over to you.
Oh, yeah. So I was just, uh, I'm sure you're all familiar with the contract. It's um, one of the things in it, it should be revisited every five years, and I think it's been ten. And it's basically to go over the financials and make sure everyone's on the same page. I've been on council for five years, I think, and I've never seen a, a financial given to us. And we're supposed to have a financial every year given to the council to, to review. And um, of course, we asked for it and uh, we didn't get it. And when, when you're, when you get back, again, turn the air conditioner on. Everyone's cooking. Thank you. So I guess the main thing to start with is why have not we gotten any financials? Or have you asked or, because I've never seen one.
So as with anything, it's contract management. Kind of the city entered into an agreement with Portlock and then we as staff are responsible for managing the contract. The short answer is no. The long answer is back in July, I met with the golf course manager to kind of get to the root of some of the citizen complaints that have been coming up at City Hall regarding maintenance issues as well as other complaints that relate to the contract. It was a very good discussion. We kind of went through some issues. One of the complaints, for example, is when the golf course was originally considered, there weren't houses everywhere. And so then areas that have been, I would say, left in their natural state have been in their natural state, whether they're, because there's water tulies or whatever. So when people, the houses have been built, now the tulies are growing up and blocking the view of the golf course. So we're getting complaints from neighbors about some of the unkempt areas. And so that was my initial conversation with the, the golf course manager. We had a, he explained the field of play. Um, we discussed that there really isn't a standard of maintenance in the contract. And so we kind of were agreeing to continue to discuss some of those issues as well as the Title twenty-two issues that Catherine had brought up, et cetera. Subsequently, I had three other meetings with the regional manager of the golf course um company that uh, that the, where the LEC is contracted with, as well as the attorney with, of the LEC, and I have gotten absolutely nowhere. I have asked for the budget. I've asked for the past financials and I've asked for some of these maintenance dis- um, issues to be addressed. And I've tried to be cordial. We've had set up meetings. We've had consistent meetings. Then there was meetings where she had forgotten there was a meeting and that's where it's been left.
Was this with Trune or Mr. Han or?
It was with Mr. Han's attorney and Trune, but really the contract is with Mr. Han. And so he's responsible for making sure that the terms of the contract are met. Oh, well, the city is responsible for that, but it's with him. I've never met with him personally and I haven't gotten, I've asked for all of this data that you had actually um, just brought up, but I have not gotten any of it.
Because one of the, the item twenty in the, in the contract says right here that the LEC shall provide lease or an accounting of LEC's operations on or before the thirtieth day of the following each June, June thirtieth of lease term. And like I said, I've been here five years and never seen one.
Andy, have you looked at this contract?
Briefly, as it's in the agenda.
What's your take on it?
There's a contractual obligation to provide that.
Okay.
So I guess my question is, are they in a breach of contract by not giving us their financials? Because we don't know if they've made more than their two point two million to give us the extra one percent above their, what is it, the forty thousand dollar per year fee, so.
Candidly, my last, um, I, I think, what was it, a couple of weeks ago, when I had my last attempt, I had forwarded all of my information to Andy so that he could take that forward or kind of deal with that, since I'm on my way out, basically.
Right, yeah.
I would
So the, what the agreement says is that the, if they fail to provide these financial um, documents that are listed here in the agreement, city has an obligation to provide written notice. Um, that has not been done. Um, so if they don't, if they do not comply with the written notice, then the contract says that's a material breach.
Okay, so the fact that Amy asked for it is not an action to do anything. We need to formally
That's correct. So in the, in the agreement, there's a section about notice. So you'll see, um, you'll see, and then it'll That's correct. So in the, in the agreement, there's a section about notice. So you'll see, um, you'll see, and then it'll say how you're supposed to provide written notice and to whom.
Is that something we could do to at least get the financials?
Absolutely.
Council agrees? Okay.
It's not an administrative action.
I guess, so typically with contract negotiations, you don't wanna send the cannon, especially when you're on your way out the door. So I didn't wanna just.
Right, I understand, but the next city manager, this could be brought up with the next city manager for them to handle.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's.
I'll open that up to public comment.
You read the contract, they were paying eleven thou, eleven thousand dollars a month in two thousand and eleven. And now they only pay two, since two thousand, I think it's fifteen, they only pay seventy thousand dollars. And our tertiary plant, we got a hundred and, minus a hundred ninety fifty nine, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in the hole. It's gonna take a rocket scientist to see what's going on. I mean, I'm stupid, but I understand this. They screwed us. And, and they just broke the contract by not giving us a thing. How come we're not taking that contract and ripping it up? I don't understand this at all. I'm no brain rocket science, but this is crazy. And for Mr. Han, I've never met the man. I don't know if you guys remember when they first started that place. The LL seed is in Hawaii. We had to hire a lawyer to protect us because there was like three or four million dollars went to that. And it disappeared. The FBI was looking at it. We had to hire a lawyer to protect the city. Yeah, people don't remember that. Thank you.
Any more public comment? Yeah. Close public comment. Moving on to item three, discussion regarding appointment or election of city clerk position, recommendation for staff direction.
Um, this item was brought to us at the request of Vice Mayor Ratten and Councilmember Atlin. So currently, our city clerk is an, is an elected position and, um, she receives a stipend to perform the duties that are outlined in the municipal code. And I think all of those are included in your staff report. And with that, I will turn it over to the council.
At this point, we, there's been several discussions about making the city clerk part of the financial staff. And rather than an elected position. Um, Janice is, the election will be up in this year, December. And I, I, I don't know whether or not Janice is running again. Uh, if she is, then moving this from an elected to a appointed would have to go on the ballot. We would have to get a vote for making it no longer elected. Um, if Janice is running and it fails, then, and Janice gets the most votes, or three, her opponents gets the most votes, then they would be, again, the elected official. Um, if it passes, then the position would no longer be elected and it would become part of the city staff. Uh, most cities nowadays do have, do no longer have elected city, um, clerk positions. And in a city of our size, the utilization of, of information and getting information, staff, time, efforts. Um, it is a, a lot of work. So having a staff member doing the, this level of work would be more advantageous, I believe, for the city. And I, right now, we are paying Janice an additional stipend on top of what the actual stipend is. I believe the actual stipend is two hundred dollars a month, um, much like we get. And Janice is getting an additional stipend, uh, by resolution of the council that is bringing her up to, I believe it's twenty-six, including her regular stipend, uh, twenty-six thousand annually. Is that correct? Uh, is it twenty-four?
No, twenty-two.
Total?
Total.
Okay, so it's twenty-two total. Um, those funds then could be used. We would just simply redirect the funds to the staff position in the finance department. So at this point, this is a having an elected position, there is little or no oversight in the job duties. Um, the electeds are not responsible to anybody but the, themselves. Um, we as council can only be uh, centered as part of, as any kind of, um, if we're not doing our job, we can be centered for not doing our job. Um, there's nothing that says, you know, anybody, the city manager can't come to us and say, you have to do X, Y, and Z. Um, that with an elected, those, that's the rules. Um, as an elected city clerk with all of the responsibilities, there's no oversight in how and when the work is completed. So this would offer us additional oversight into the position, making sure that the, the work that is necessary is getting done. Have I said anything out of, out of line with what the position is and what the process is? Mr. Attorney?
So the duties of city clerk you have outlined in your municipal code, there's also outlined in the government code. Um, we spoke broadly about the, about the procedure to change that. Um, there is a procedure in the government code to change an elected position to an appointed position. Um, that requires the council to adopt a resolution to establish a ballot question, um, to submit that ballot question to the county elections office within the time periods. Uh, I, I think it's eighty-eight days, um, from the election, which would put you somewhere in August. Um, and then each elections office, the registrar has a recommended period of time because they have their own, uh, you know, administrative procedures that they have to go through. And I believe here in Amador County, they ask for a hundred and thirty-three days.
So we have to, if we're going to put this on the ballot, we would have to do it for, for this election, we would have to get it on the ballot by August. July.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's what the law says, what the, uh, to do the hundred and thirty-three days that Amador County would ask for, it would be June.
June, okay. So it would have to be June. So if we're going to make this position a, uh, staff position as opposed to an elected position, we would have to make that decision and get it on the ballot.
And to add to that, Andy would have to write just a ballot measure. Should the city clerk, blah, 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 the yes.
Yeah, so the law prescribes the question. So the, the question is, shall the, shall the, the office of city clerk be appointed or elected? Or, uh, shall, or shall the city, or shall the office of city clerk be appointed? Yes or no? Um, and then from there, the people will vote. It's a majority vote. There's not a super majority requirement in that. Um, yeah, the, there are, uh, you know, the, we have to do, it is a, a measure that's submitted. Um, so then, yeah, so there'll be, you know, some, some obligations within the city attorney's office that we would have to establish to the voters what this vote means.
Okay, um, so two things on here. One, should the city clerk be elected or should it be, um, staff? I really don't care one way or the other. However, there is a lot of work that the city clerk has to do. Um, and then there's the oversight thing. If, you know, if it's being done or if it isn't being done. So what happened in twenty sixteen, we didn't have any staff. At that time, the city clerk got paid two hundred dollars a month like everybody else. Um, there was no staff. We had an interim city manager he recommended, and I did send you the, um, the, uh, um, staff report and the resolution from twenty sixteen. I was on the council. I voted in the eighteen hundred dollar a month change from two hundred to eighteen hundred dollars a month. My name's on there. Um, at that time, there were no staff. And at that time, um, you know, we needed someone that knew where everything was and could perform the duties. And so if you look at the list of duties here, it's pretty extensive. You know, I don't think that that's fair to, um, have someone do that for two hundred dollars a month. And that's why we decided to up it to eighteen hundred. It's currently at twenty-two hundred and twenty-two hundred a month times twelve is not twenty-two thousand. It's twenty-six four. So, um, my question is, there's a lot of duties in here that are being done by other people. Okay, because now we do have staff. Okay? Um, I mean, you can go through the list and say, is that city clerk doing that? Yes or no? I mean, that's pretty easy, and I've done that. Um, I don't know what the answer is, cause I'm not here at City Hall. But, um, I can look into this list. There's a lot of things on here that now the, the city manager's doing, or the parks, the rec person is doing, or, um, administrative assistant was doing. Um, so I'm just saying, you know, we should look at these duties and see if we should still be paying twenty-two hundred dollars a month to the city clerk, or should we adjust it, or should we make that a staff position? And it's a good time to do it now because if someone's gonna run for city clerk, they need to know what their pay's gonna be. Um, I did also ask for, what did the city clerk do prior to this list? It wasn't this extensive of, of a list. Um, so, yeah, it's just, um, the problem with an elected official is all you can do is censor someone. Okay, so, um, when they let people in the city hall after hours, what can you do about it? Absolutely nothing. Okay, so if that was a staff person, they would be reprimanded or or whatever, had, at least have a talking to. So, um, that's my concern. Um, there's no accountability for elected officials other than, than, um, censorship, which is fifty dollar fine. So that's why I prefer to either see this go back to the two hundred dollars if the city clerk the duties they used to have. Um, or talk about bringing it in as a staff position. That's all I have.
Counsel? You got nothing?
Nope.
I'm gonna, public comment first. Do you have anything to say?
I, I, I do have something to say. Um, I, I am. I'm looking at this list of duties and it's pretty extensive. And I can see how it falls on the city manager's desk as well and other employees in the city. And we're, we're, staff is busy. Um, and I think having an additional employee in the building that could possibly work on other, to share some of this workload would be beneficial. Because often, we don't know who we're getting the agenda, agenda from. Most recently, it's been more consistent. But in the past, we've gotten it from so and so, and so and so, and so and so. And so, um, I think a designated um, position would be beneficial. It's just my two cents.
I was just gonna add one thing too, is to Dominic's point, is why the clerk, um, position got changed because of the workload and because there wasn't staff. Though the municipal code outlines what is to be done because it's an elected official, and that definition can be narrowed. So for example, as Andy pointed out, the government code offers the definition of what the city clerk is, and that's the official sealer of records and keeper of the records. And so those responsibilities got added on by need, necessity, not necessarily like the best city management practices as things evolve. And so that is just a municipal code change that the council could choose to make also. Is redefine what those duties are that are just strictly in compliance with the government code. Um, and so that's, but in a small town, that's what happens is more duties get lobbed on to this person that can do it and get it done. And so that's an important point because I wanna point out too, is I've had this conversation with Janice, is elected city clerks are kind of a thing of bygone days when you needed someone to sit there and type the minutes when the men folk were sitting there having a meeting, basically. And so it's, and so it has gone by the wayside because again, there are other duties and then it becomes a staff position and then so those positions could be directed. But at any rate, I know Janice wants to say something.
I just wanna ask Dominic, what duties am I not doing? When you say I'm not doing all my duties, and how do you know what I do? How do you actually know? Are you getting that from somebody else?
No, I'm getting it.
Where are you getting it from?
Well, um, thank you for asking, Janice. Um, I'm on the Parks Commission meeting and you're supposed to take the minutes and you weren't there.
Okay.
You don't even know the duties. That is not part of the city clerk duties.
It says, shall attend all meetings of the city council and other meetings unless excused there from. I really didn't wanna get in an argument with you, but.
Why do you not wanna argue with me? You're just right. You're always right about everything.
Thank you.
This is very productive.
I'm just saying, like the list on here, some of it is being done by other staff.
Yeah, I'm gonna, we're gonna, I'm, I'm sorry, we're just gonna, we're gonna.
Doing it.
Janice.
An explanation.
Well, we can, you guys can.
See, this is what I'm saying about.
Later.
Later, when?
After the meeting.
After the meeting?
Yes, please.
Talk about what my duties are? And what I'm doing and what I'm not doing? I'd like to know what I'm not doing.
Okay, we can do that after the meeting. And I'm gonna open it up to public comment now. Thank you.
My name is Andy Aguilera, two seventy-nine Sprint Creek Drive. I don't want you to change it. I want you to leave it so somebody can run and we can vote on it. Because I'm gonna be nasty, but I mean, don't, don't take me serious because that's what happens. Okay, you're gonna appoint somebody for her position. So if Stacy went out and found the best woman in Iowa to do the job, the most experienced, and he brought it up to you, there would be three people on the council that wouldn't vote for it. And don't say no because it's true. Now, another thing I'll tell you, Jack should be the mayor. He was the vice mayor and he was doing a good job. But there's three people that don't like him, so he didn't get the job.
The topic is for.
Well, I'm just telling you, it's about voting, taking it off of the voting. I'm just telling you why I don't want you to take it off because I know what will happen. Somebody will find somebody good and the three people up there will say, no, we pick somebody.
No, it's, it would be a hired position if it turned into a staff position. The city manager would hire the person.
No, you guys would end up saying okay or not.
We have no say in who hires staff.
City manager hires staff.
Managers, city manager hires staff.
Well, I'm just, I'm just telling you what's happened around here before, but I'd rather leave it on the ballot. Because if you put it on the ballot, probably it won't pass anyway. Cause everybody in Iowa knows what goes on. So I'm just telling you, leave it on the ballot. Don't go changing things. It works great. Janice does a good job. I mean, and anybody says she doesn't do their job, something wrong with them. She does her work. She always has. And she used to before, if you asked her a question, she'd tell you, but now I don't know. She's kinda lorry, I think, a little bit, so I don't ask her anything. But don't pick on her. We, we voted for her. She's our candidate. She has rights. So I'm just telling you, leave it on the, the way it is. Don't go changing things. And the next thing that we wanna bring up later down the road, we should have the mayor of Iowa should be elected by the public.
Okay, that's not under this item.
No, no, I'm just telling you the way I feel.
I understand.
I can say what I want. I got five.
During, no, during this, this topic is for the.
And you guys know the way you work, you three up there. So I'm just telling you, I'm not being mean. I'm just telling you the truth.
This topic is for the city clerk. Thank you, Andy.
Been coming here since February two thousand and five. Oddly enough for the interconnect project that I got laughed out of this very same room. But since that time, the only thing even approaching a honest professional has been that lady right there. I'm on my seventh or eighth city manager, present company excluded, and you know, like I said, but had not Janice been there in, right behind the city manager, or more like behind me, there was a couple of them, Mr. Lambert and Mr. Hank and I, we might've had a problem. Cause I, one morning I had to spend an hour in the rain cutting my way out of my driveway from the city tree. Mr. Hanken asked me to come back later and I was not real happy. Janice handled me. Okay, and it's without her every day. I'm not the only guy that comes in here a little bit irritated and she handles us calmly and professionally. And quite frankly, I'm a little flabbergasted as what, I brought this council after an article that Mr. Atlin wrote in September of twenty-two. I brought this council, all of the information over two, two sessions that would lead any reasonable person to come to the same conclusion that I have, that this man is a habitual liar and.
Hey, you are off, you are out of order, Mr. Stoller.
It is free speech, the first amendment.
This is on.
Have a good evening.
We will. I'd like to make it clear, nobody is accusing Janice of not doing her job. This is looking, looking. This is looking, looking, I'm sorry.
Told me that I was not doing my job.
I said you were not at the parks meeting, is what I said.
Hold on, hold on. This staff report is just looking at the positions, looking at the duties that are, there's such a long list of duties and they don't balance out. And my, that's my understanding why this has come before us. That's all.
So you're going to hire a full-time employee with benefits?
That's not what we're saying, Janice. Hey.
That's not what you're saying. You just said you're going to hire a person to take my place as a city employee.
Yes.
That's what you said.
That is, that is potentially, but first of all, this isn't about Janice. This is about the city clerk. The position of an elected city clerk. If Janice is in the position, it's Janice. But if Janice doesn't run, it's somebody else. So as a city, we have to decide, are we going to have a appointed or appointed city clerk? Are we going to have an elected city clerk? Are we going to absorb this city clerk position into a staff position as many cities have done? And it's not an indictment on Janice. It's an, it's a discussion of what we want to see in our city clerk. I, I would, I would venture to say I would like to have this same conversation on the city treasurer as well for the same reasons.
Yeah, but you don't, I got public comment. They, they took the, they let the treasurer do what she's supposed to do. Just like they told her, she didn't have to be at the planning commission. Now you're using that against her.
Bingo. This, this, this is, I, I understand freedom of speech, but this is way off the staff report.
It's on the subject about you three people.
No, it's not. It's about the city clerk.
And, and.
Okay, alright.
Dominic accused me, looked right at me.
I have a right to speak as an employee or elected official like anybody else up there has.
There is protocol to the meeting. I'm just trying to keep it orderly because it's gone way south. This has gone way south.
Well, you're the one that turned me in for giving her a thing that I had that they didn't have.
It's northwest.
And I know that for a fact. And, and the whole thing is, he just said it a minute ago. He just looked right at me when he said it.
Andy, what would you like me to do here?
Well, the, you're in public comment, so um, as a member of the public, they can comment on the agenda item within the, within the framework of this agenda item. So if there's, if there's more public comment, you, you continue to take it. Um, I would, I would recommend refraining from responding to public comment because what responding to public comment does um, is it establishes a discourse.
Yes.
And then um, so public comments intended to be information for you all to continue to um, discuss and take action if necessary on the items on the agenda.
Thank you.
Uh, the thing is that this city has lost more stuff over the years than any city I've ever heard of. You can't find it. That's why Mr. Nevin used to use a camera and video everything. Because he said they didn't do this and didn't do that. Too bad the man ain't alive. Thank you.
I do not question the item on the agenda rather to be a elected city clerk or an appointed city clerk. But I do have an issue with one of the city um, council members stating to me that I have not been doing my job. I have a real issue with that. And I believe it's not you saying that it's not my job. It's just a retaliation is what you're doing to me for being friends with Stacy, for being friends with Jack Mitchell and the public that know I do a professional job. No, no, I'm here every day doing my job. But um, you have the nerve to stay there and say that I'm not doing my job. I'd like you to point out one thing I'm not doing that's on there and that nobody else in this staff does anything that I do, Dominic. You need to come in and look and see what I do so that you know firsthand. And for you, that's a retaliation against me. I believe it is. Or is it age discrimination maybe?
Think I'm older than you, so it's hardly possible.
Or is it bullying or harassment? I've been harassed now for the last two years by a couple of you and maybe three.
So Mayor Lefane, if there's no more public comment, you can close public comment.
Public comment, anybody on Zoom? Nope.
I've lived in this town for over sixty years. I'm older than almost any of you, almost all of you on the council, at least one person for sure. I have known Janice for a long time, not as a city clerk, because I didn't know her that as a first when I was a teenager. But anytime I ever came in here and asked for anything, she would find it if it was ten years ago, twenty years ago, if she didn't, she'd look it up. She knew where to find it. I think she's done a wonderful job and I hope she runs again when it's up because she is the only one that I know of over sixty years that has done anything that helped, didn't help the city, what she was asked. And I don't like her being harassed also. Thinking.
This is why emails aren't supposed to be shared.
Close public comment.
A closed public comment. Close it hard. Is this for information or are we taking action? I have to find the glasses.
So I'm just going to reiterate that this wasn't about Janice. This is about the duties of the city clerk turned into a fiasco like it just did. Um, everybody's accusing everybody of everything. Um, it was simply the duties on here or or um, being done by other people. I was asked a question. I didn't say Janice wasn't doing her job. She asked me what, what, name one. And I said, well, you're not at the parks meeting. I was there. Um, you're supposed to be there to keep the minutes and then apparently it's been excused from, from that, but it says clearly that the council sets um, the meeting. So if Janice has been excused from any of these duties, then I'd like to see the resolution that excused her from it. That's all.
Not a resolution, Dominic. It was at the direction of the city.
This is, this is council discussion. We're, we're discussing it to vote. Um, so in, uh, the point of bringing this in-house is to make the city hall runs smoothly and more efficiently. And if bringing this in-house, not as an elected, can make that happen, then I, I think we as a council need to seriously consider that and evaluate whether or not that's something we want. And again, I see that the, I did see, I'm sorry, the treasurer's name is on here, but it, uh, I, I believe that that also needs to be brought in. Um, because again, that's another job that has so many functions that they are that their stipend is like nothing. Um, between the two jobs, I mean, between these two job duties, you have almost a full-time position. So I would prefer not to make this about Janice. It's not about you. It is about the city clerk position. Whether or not we're going to move forward with a it, at continuing it as an elected position. I, I would like to see it as a staff position for better functioning city hall and better oversight of the work that's being done and how it's being done and the compensation for the work that's being done. And in my conversations with you, Janice, you told me you were not going to run again and that was the only reason I thought this would be a good time to look at it and bring it in-house.
That's right.
Well, it's really none of the council's business as of now, what I do. I don't ask you if you're going to run next time.
It was just in conversation you and I were having and that's all.
Yes, it was.
Okay, so that was, that was my reasoning for um, opening it up for discussion. Councilman Rhodes and Mitchell.
I have nothing. I uh, I do like that it's an elected position. Um, I think, Janice, you've done a great job for me, um, for but some may disagree with that, but I certainly think in seeing the public come up and talk and their passion, clearly you've got a lot of heart.
So the question is, is do you want to put it to a vote? You want to make a motion?
Yeah, the, the way the agenda is put together is says to provide direction to staff. So if you would like to provide direction to staff, one way or the other, um, that would be, that would be the appropriate time for you all to take action on that.
So I will make a motion that we instruct a city attorney to draft up a ballot notion, measure, um, moving the city clerk from an elected position to, or just removing it from the, an elected position as well as the, as well as the treasurer. Both.
We have it on for city clerk right now, so.
Okay, well, but, okay, the staff report only says, said treasurer, so I, I didn't, I thought this was only clerk, but okay, only for the city clerk.
Second.
What's it cost for us to get it on the ballot? Is there a cost to it?
So. Yeah, so part of the.
I mean, if, if the voters, if that's the way the voters feel, I say put it on the ballot, let the voters decide.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the, in the motion in the second that I have, which is staff direction to bring back, to bring back this item, part of that staff report would be costs associated with a ballot measure. Um, you would have uh, what would be brought back to the council at a, at a future meeting would be a resolution establishing their authority to do so. Um, inclusive of a staff report outlining the process and everything that's going to be involved with that measure process, inclusive of the cost. At that point in time, you'd be able to take action on the resolution. If the resolution passes, it would get sent to the registrar's office and continue through. If it fails, it fails and there'd be no change. There's a live motion on the floor to give that direction to staff, so unless there's any further questions or discussion.
Yes. I don't like this part. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, no, no.
I'm going to let the voters decide as Andy and Jim said. So I will go approve the motion and if the bond doesn't pass, then.
Well, we're not there yet. We're just, we're just giving direction to bring it back to us.
To bring it back and then let the people speak. No, the, yeah, okay.
Then second part is the treasurer, right?
Yes, we can.
I've also got a question for the attorney. So the city clerk is saying that some of these duties have been reassigned other people by the city manager. Right? Which of course I don't know that because I'm only reading a resolution. So can we look into that like? Because it doesn't give the manager authority to do that in the resolution.
Actually.
Or does it? So I would like to know which duties have been reassigned because my whole point of bringing this up was that uh, we could use some of that funding that is being done by staff now for staff. It was nothing personal, but of course.
Always personal.
That's how it always goes here. Um, but you know, what duties have been reassigned and let's look at the um, if, if a bunch of these duties have been reassigned, then the pay was based on doing all of these duties is, is, is what my point was.
Yeah, it is kind of a mess.
So, and like I said, I don't expect someone to do. And that's why I voted to pay Janice the money because it wasn't fair to make somebody do all of these duties for two hundred dollars a month. That wasn't fair. Okay?
Okay, so let's move on to item four, discussion of the.
I have a comment to make.
It's been closed, Janice. I'm sorry.
Um, I also do the Creek Committee. I also do the standing CFD committees. I am actually doing IT stuff. I'm managing the website, adding agenda items that you've asked me to do, so I'm working on that. So there are different duties that have been added to.
That's what we're saying. It's a mess.
Let's get the resolution.
It's not a mess. I do everything on the job duties. I don't get what you're saying that I don't do some of the duty. That's what I have an issue with.
Okay. Moving on to something maybe a little nicer, um, establishment of a memorial tree program. Memorial tree program should be memorial bench program.
Well, that's next, I think.
Bench tree.
Tree bench, bench tree.
So in the interest of.
Time?
Yes.
Yes, because we still have closed session and um, I think it's a good time to.
How about staff would recommend, I think this is a good idea that it, we put this on the next Parks and Rec Commission meeting to vet it out and bring it back for a propos, a proposed program.
Sounds great. I think that's probably.
Mayor Lefane outlined some items.
Really, we were, we weren't going to discuss it. We were just going to look at a resolution, but I don't see a resolution here.
Wasn't one included yet because I wanted to kind of make sure I understood what the direction was. So I would recommend we push this to Parks and Rec for their meeting next week. They can vet out the issues and bring back what they recommend for a resolution of approval by you all.
And perhaps um, the chiefs can work with public, we'll talk at that meeting about the memorial bench for the Owens family. And so that would be our, our first testing ground for the process.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that would be good. Okay. Sounds good. Okay, so let's uh, head on over to reports and communication from city manager or city attorney.
Unless anything changes, the, uh, I believe this is Amy's last meeting that we'll have as her interim city manager. And I just wanted to publicly, uh, you know, acknowledge that I've enjoyed working with Amy. Um, and I've learned a lot for baby and um, I want to wish her well on her next um, adventure.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
City manager.
Yep, back to you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to serve as the interim city manager this last year. Um, I've had the privilege to work with a fantastic staff. They have been hands down a ready dive in, dig in, let's figure out some of the problems. And I'm very thankful for all of their support and help this last year. I own is a wonderful community with so many opportunities and I just want to say thank you again for this opportunity to allowing me to serve as your interim city manager.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Council comments, committee reports, future agenda items.
I'm good for now.
Um, I, I have one comment and it's regarding the one-page contract that Mr. Scully brought us. Um, he read section A that's dealing with uh, recycled water, but as we saw tonight from what West Yost presented, the water we're talking about now is fully tertiary quality and not recycled water. So they don't have first right of refusal for that. I just wanted to clarify that. Of course. That's all I have.
Okay, um, was it on March eighth, we had um, all the mayors got together and had a meeting. Uh, the, I think it was Jackson Mayor Steve. He could only stay for a little time, but um, it was a great meeting. Um, city managers had had a meeting earlier and there was talk about the cities, uh, maybe sharing resources, sharing uh, grant writers, uh, passing the grant writer around um, and working with all the cities the state liked to see um, when cities were working together cohesively. We talked about, um, they talked about all the new equipment they had that they weren't using. Um, and just they threw out the, the possibility of sharing resources at a later date, which was I thought a pretty good idea. That is it for me.
Just want to thank you, Amy, for a great year. Uh, it was really fun working with you. Uh, you will be missed, I'm sure, by the public and by the council. It was an excellent.
It was an excellent job, I appreciate.
Um, I had an Amador Air District Board meeting today that was quite good. A lot of really good people on that board, I didn't realize there's 10 on that board, but a lot of good friends of mine, nice to talk to them and learn what's going on up there. The main discussion was they were celebrating the hard charger at Amador City, one of the first ones, I guess. But now they're concerned, like, who's paying the power bill, how much it is, because the power is fluctuating so much now, so they have to keep going back into the system and upgrading it to, oh, that was kind of interesting. And I guess there's, which I didn't know about, there's some incentive program for if anyone wants to buy a electric weed eater, for instance. They will pay you $200 to put it towards a new one. And the biggest one, obviously, is Guy Saw Center, but they've been trying to reach out to Ace Hardware in Ione, and they couldn't get him to bite on it, so I went and met Jason today, and he didn't understand the program. So now they're gonna get together, so Jason will be on that list where if someone wants to upgrade to a electric weed eater, or whatever, they can do it there. So that was kind of cool. And I'm gonna miss you dearly. You've done a wonderful job, thank you.
Okay, we are going to adjourn, let me read it. Again, I lost.
Well, and I can't, I can't help you, I don't have mine.
Would you like me to make the disclosure?
Thank you.
Would you like me to make the disclosure, or do you want to?
Yeah, go ahead.
So at this time, the Ione City Council adjourned to closed session to address the items listed on the agenda as B1 and 2, public employee appointment and conference with labor negotiators.
Oh, God. Oh, my God, I hope so.
Not resuming, not yet.
No reportable action?
No reportable action? Is your phone still on over there?
It's his computer.
Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The House has it.
The House knows there's going to be at least one you now.